All right, it is six o'clock and I will call the August 22nd, 2023 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Tonight, we have just Tammy, Pastor Tammy Porter from Life Changers Christian Church, to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. God, we come here tonight thankful, grateful, and blessed. Thankful for your grace, mercy, and love, and we give you praise for officials, Lord, who believe in the power of prayer and who gladly welcome you into this place. Be in the middle of this meeting tonight, Lord. May honest and right decisions be made and give wisdom and direction to all those in authority. Help the attitudes to be honorable and may we be respectful of others' opinions and convictions. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to live in this great nation. And again, Lord, we give you praise for all that will be accomplished tonight for your glory. In Jesus's name, amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum tonight. Mr. Smith is out of town. The first item on the agenda is always citizens' time. I will call you up and you will have three minutes. And the first person we have signed up is Ms. Linda Myers.
Good evening. I made a trip over to the Bleeds Bridge and there is still not a V-Dot footprint on the bridge. So just so you know, now we're going to head towards five months of their 16-month repair and nothing's happening. Also, you know, I spent over 10 months with the school board about the pornography books and so on, got that organized. And finally, after reams of FOIA requests and all kinds of paperwork and meeting, we finally got those thrown out. I just found out about a sex information and education council of the U.S. Now, this council is three or four generations into it, and they're funded by federal, state, of course, the elites, backed by the teachers' union. And it's within all the schools somehow promoting promiscuity, perversion, gender ideology. And now they're going global with the WHO and UNICEF. I would like to know, I was hoping we have a liaison amongst you guys, to find out about this Sex Information and Education Council here in With County. Do we have this curriculum here within our school system? And how is it metered out to elementary, secondary, and so on and so forth? So the initials are S-I-E-C-U-S, and it is a federal, state-funded curriculum, and it's throughout the nation. So that would be very interesting because I really don't want to start another FOIA request thing for the next 10 months. So hopefully you can look into it and find out if perhaps this curriculum is being used here in With County. I'm sure all the parents would really like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. The next person we have signed up is Mr. Zach Lester.
Good afternoon, Lord. Thank you, guys, for always being here and doing what you do. I appreciate you so much. Just going to go over a couple headlines and I'm going to try to wrap it around into a little closing statement. So we have a lot going on in the nation, the economy and everything like that. So we can look to Hawaii and the nation's response to something, a tragic event, and thousands, you know, there's 1,300 people missing right now. And our news channels still aren't giving it the time that it should be, you know, and the attention. So the funding also, FEMA is kind of getting in the way of a lot of the resources that are trying to be brought into Maui. And how can that affect us here in this little county? Well, the government, whenever they do get in charge of a situation, it usually doesn't work out, you know. Trust us, we're with the government, is always a funny saying. We can look, though, to see East Palestine and Ohio also that just had a humongous natural disaster wipe the whole county off the face of the planet. Now we're dealing with it again in Maui and another failed cleanup by our, you know, three-letter organizations. So here in our county, if we were to ever experience anything like that, what would be our response? And what would we have in place to try to take control of that situation? Same thing with COVID 2.0, which is getting ready to be brought out. They're already locking schools down in Georgia, mask mandates, forced vaccinations, social distancing. You can shut down all of our family businesses and leave open the pot shops, the liquor stores, the strip clubs, and the big business, big chain business. And so we really have a lot on our table coming up over the next few months. And I would like to see our county try to get ahead of the problem. And so I have a friend in Austin, Texas, who goes to a church. It's 3,000 to 5,000 people in the congregation weekly. He has been brought in to do a crisis response team for that church. Big, big group. They're taking it very seriously so that if something like Maui were to happen, then Austin, Texas has a good grip on people and a good system in place so that they can respond and they can take control of the situation. And I think that we can do that similar, but also expand that. We have so many great churches in our county. We have so many good pastors. I think we should be taking those resources and those people, putting them to good use. There's a great little viral video going around of a tree that falls over a main road in Alabama, you know. And if we were to leave the government to the situation, it would take them a day and a half to get the right people, the right stuff in place to fix it. But it just so happens a couple country boys put the chainsaw in the truck, chopped the tree up, moved it out of the way immediately, everything resumed. So I think that we can approach the same thing. Instead of having so much bureaucracy, we get it down to the local people who can act right then and there, we could actually have a much faster response. I think that's about all that I got, but I thank you, guys, for all that you do every month, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lester. That's all we have signed up for citizens' time, so I will close citizens' time. I'll move on to the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the payment of the invoices.
So moved.
Right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Uh.
Right. So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from August 8th, 2023. As you know, Ms. Collins did send out some corrections and additions to the minutes. We had a couple misspellings in some documents that were presented during citizens' time that were requested to be added to the minutes. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended to correct the misspellings and the addition of the documents from the public.
So moved.
Right. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson and a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on the minutes? Right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. We'll move into old business. Mr. Baer, do we have anything to discuss under old business?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Right. We'll move into reports. We have treasurer report. I don't see Ms. Gwynn, so we'll skip that one. Ms. Vaught, our commissioner, do you have anything?
Good, how are you? I'm good. I wanted to give you an update on our tax books for the year. I've gotten the initial personal property book done. Lori has it right now. She's running the accounts receivable in the train environment to see if it's going to match up. So we're doing pretty good on that one. The real estate book, we still have a lot of the same problems that we had last year. I tried to get the ball rolling on that the first part of June. For some reason, we're just now beginning to contact Tyler and see if these issues can be resolved. Hopefully, they will be. So I think we're in pretty good shape. A little worried about the real estate, though, and we don't want to see anything to happen this year that happened last year on that. Anybody have any questions about anything about the tax books?
Ms. Vaught has provided us the PPTR reimbursement rate, I think as of today or yesterday.
Yesterday.
And so we will put that on your next agenda to approve that PPTRA. I think it was 27%.
27.27.
Yep. So we will have that to you.
Mr. Baer, I don't, and I'm not sure if it's something we can assist with as far as the IT department, but can we get Ms. Vaught and see what we can do about the tax books?
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Vaught?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me. All right. We have the sheriff and apparently they're dealing with something, so we'll move on to new business. We have the consent calendar that everybody's received in their board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent count? Right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
Then we have the Virginia America 250 Commission or Commemoration Commission. Mr. Baer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Commonwealth of Virginia is looking forward to the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, similar to like when they did the 400th anniversary of Jamestown. I'm actually a little more excited about this one because the Jamestown was everything on the eastern shore side of the state. This part, With County, has some history involved with it, with the Fincastle resolutions and the lead mines and everything that was there. So there, the 250 Commission is going around and asking localities to form committees that would work over the next couple of years to come up with ideas and events and get grant funding for promotion of those activities. And so I would request that the board approve this resolution and also would also appoint these initial members to the commission. And I'm sure there may be some other people that you all know or others that may come forward that would be of good input to help out with this.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baer about the commission? Right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-38, the resolution relating to the support of the Virginia America 250 Commission recitals.
So moved.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. And now we have the appointment of the committee members. Intertain a motion to appoint the listed individuals as committee members.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on those appointments? I don't have a question, but you know, the older I get, I get sentimental when I read that about the Fincastle resolution. I wish Mr. Hale was still around because that's the first person I would have put on that committee.
My sentiments exactly, and I told somebody that. I'm like, Mr. Hale would absolutely have loved this and would probably spend an hour educating us every meeting in the process about it.
Or two.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So appointed. Ms. Gwynn, you want to do your, come on up?
Apologies for being late. Ms. Vaught and I were trying to work through some personal property and wanted to make sure the system was going as it should be. I'm going to be very short tonight. All I have for you is just basically going over the financials. Currently, at the end of July, we had a balance of $78,123,338. And included in that balance was the general fund balance of $40,274,269. So we've kind of flattened out, but going into tax time, you'll see that change. But we're working toward taxes, so I'm hopeful, as it was last time, everything will be on time. I think personal property is going to go really well, so we're kind of just preparing right now. That's about all that we're doing. So, does anybody have any questions on the financials or anything else that I can maybe answer for you tonight or address or anything?
Does anybody have any questions for Lori?
No, sir.
I'm just short and sweet tonight. I don't have much going on tonight. I can give you more information next time, maybe.
I mean, just real quick, and I know we discussed it last year or sometime, timelines get confused, but I know we talked about splitting up the personal property versus real estate. And I don't know, the way tax season's laid out, I know there's never a slow time in Ms. Gwynn or Ms. Vaught's office. It's one time period to the other, but have we had any discussions about that or?
We have not. It would probably be a good idea to either do it or have one of our committee meetings, if you want, Budget Committee or somebody like that, to sit down with the treasurer and the commissioner and talk about the timeframe and if we want to make something different. We would need to do that relatively soon. That way, when we get ready to put everything out, we've got the timeframe to go with it.
And I don't know what the other board members have heard.
Yeah, I think it's.
I've got good feedback, the way it was split up last year, not by choice, but by happenstance, circumstance.
Yeah. I think it's easier for people.
People did seem to like having the split season just because our due date hits December 5th, so that hits right before Christmas. It hits, you know, just kind of end of the year, a lot of things going on. A lot of people did like having the split, but there was a lot of dissension because the due date's always December the 5th and you've moved it to March and you've moved this. And I'm not sure if going into 2023, since we're this close, because we're really, at this point, technically 45 days from bills going out, hopefully. I'm not sure where we'd put it going into '23 because you have a lot of people that they're still on that December 5th. I mean, we got a lot of notes, back letters, because we didn't send the bills out in the fall like we were supposed to. We sent them out in the spring, which, again, was not anybody's choice. But I think people do like the split due date. I would be very supportive of splitting those, but I would say also move one at least off of the December 5th due date. Move back. I don't know if you look at having a, like a, say, a November due date and then you move one maybe to the spring. I'm not sure really how you move them, but I would really say try to move one off of the December 5th date if you do split. That way, you don't have it quite so close and you kind of give people a little bit of opportunity to recover from paying the tax going into Christmas and things like that.
And it may be something that we look at. And the reason I brought, like I said, I know there's never a slow time in y'all's offices.
We're on constant cycles.
Yeah, but I don't want it to get, like, put on the back burner and forgotten.
And it's one of those things, like when we're busy, the commissioner's office is not quite as busy. When they're busier, we're not quite as busy because, you know, they've been preparing the tax books, working on that the last few months. Whereas we've been coming off of collections when normally we're not, we're pursuing other things. And then, you know, kind of now coming up the next few months is a busy time because we're billing out. But we're sort of on a hit and miss on, you know, when we're both on a busy schedule or we're not. But I would think splitting it would be a good thing, but keep in mind that is a decision of the board to set the due date and to move that. So that's something that, you know, as Mr. Baer pointed out, you may want to talk about at committee. I'll be glad to attend if you'd like for me to.
Well, we're supposed to have a Budget Committee September 6th, but it might be something. Next week's a pretty good week because it's the 5th Tuesday week, which means there's no regularly scheduled committee meetings or anything like that. Maybe we can get something scheduled near the end of next week and sit down and throw out some ideas and look at the pros and cons of what we do in the process.
And I agree with the December thing. That's been a thorn in everybody's side for years.
Yeah, I agree with this. Well, as long as we don't back it up, if we do choose November for some reason, we don't back it up to this November.
Right.
Because then that's just a surprise to everyone.
Too soon.
Yeah. If we do that, I would like to look back next year.
And it may be something, you know, like Lori said, with it being 45 days out, it may be something that we need to look at for next year so we can do the public education piece of it because we're also going to be looking at a new location.
Yes, because that's my concern in potentially moving. I'm strongly, very supportive of us not moving until after the first of the year just because I think it'll be chaos.
And it may be something that, you know, change is hard and, like you said, people, as much as people complain about December due date, when they don't get those tickets, then we're just so accustomed to it.
And I will throw in there, and this has not been mentioned, but I want to, you know, I want to know kind of where I stand on it. I don't think we need to go to a twice-a-year billing for real estate.
No.
I primarily just want to see, or would like to see, real estate and personal property split on the due date. It did work out a whole lot better for us collection-wise at the office because we mail out almost 50,000 bills, so we don't have all those going out and all those payments coming in at the same time. So it was a little bit more manageable for us, the 30,000 going out initially for personal property and then the other 20,000 going out later for real estate. So it did make that a little bit more manageable to try to, you know, get those payments worked and folks taken care of. But last year was just, it just became chaos because between the reassessment and, you know, trying to get the programs to be compatible and the kinks worked out and it just, it was just one thing right after another. It was just, I'm going to say, a kind of a bad timing thing really, is what it come down to. But, you know, we learned a lot through the process and you have to have those humps to, you know, to have those learning curves.
And I don't know what the rest of, I don't like the twice-a-year billing because it doubles the work on the treasurer's office. And we already have plans in place to where they'll take payments if that's how people choose to pay it. I understand why some counties around us have done that, but I don't think that's.
We don't need that brand-new windfall. I mean, we're financially stable, that we don't need that extra billing within a fiscal year to bring in that extra windfall, is my take on it.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynn?
I don't. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. That's the bad part about getting older. I lost my place on the agenda when I hopped in.
Page 125.
All right. Staffing pulls. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three brief action items. The Fire and Rescue Committee has reviewed the initial draft of the Coordinated Emergency Services Ordinance. This is what we'll use as the umbrella to bring all the emergency services agencies together into a coordinated system, as contemplated in your budget. I've made some edits to it just to clear up some of the language and clean a few things up. I'd like to get that to Scott for his review so that we can set a public hearing for the second meeting in September, if that suits everyone.
So we need to take action to set a public hearing tonight or let Mr. Forwarding finish?
Well, it won't be advertised till later anyway. You could set a public hearing. The ordinance just needs to be available from there.
We could set the public hearing at your next meeting. I just wanted to advance it to the next stage. The second thing that I've got, Ager Park, the playground is done. The mulch is in, at least the first phase is done. So we'd like to schedule a grand opening and wanted to check to see if next Monday at 5:30 suits everyone on your calendars. We'd like to do that sooner than later, if possible. If not, you know, we can work with you to schedule some alternate dates that work for everybody.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Good for me. Fine with me.
5:30?
Should be. Mr. Smith's not here, so he don't get a vote.
We'll put out a reminder and put out some publicity and let folks know.
5:30, right.
5:30. We thought after work would be a better time.
What date again?
And then, I know it violates the spirit of what I usually do, Chairman Vaught, but some good news. The Regional Improvement Commission does meet on Thursday. We're enabled by code to cut checks once a year from the casino revenue proceeds and use those either toward public safety, education, or transportation. As you know, we've dedicated our funds toward public safety. I'm getting some indication, although I haven't seen anything official yet, that it may be above the $650,000 that we budgeted by a little bit. So I'll take more if we can get it. But I will let you know, once I meet with the commission on Thursday, what that amount actually winds up being. And then the rest of my report is written. You've had the chance to review it. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you've got.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Did Melvin give any indication when they might rebuild that at the lead mines?
They met with Johnny Kinsler last week, but I don't know that they've given us a firm date on it yet. Johnny pointed out some issues with the depth of the base asphalt, as well as the quality of the asphalt, and I think the answer is pretty clear on what they've got to do.
Okay. Thank you.
We want it sooner than later. We don't want it to drag out and get into the fall.
I agree with you. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hankins?
I do not.
Speaking of lead mines, and we haven't discussed it for a while, but is that building finished?
Finished. The construction work is done. There are probably still a few things that deserve some attention but that weren't in the design. You know, probably a few things that could be done, but, you know, that project is complete. Since you brought up lead mines, I do want to mention the peak truck that we've added, the second truck that we agreed to fund as a test through the end of the year. That has been extraordinarily effective. I think there were two rollover calls in July, so that's been very good at taking out some of those calls. And they've had the opportunity to fill in, say, there's been an instance where Whiffle had a wreck on the interstate. They had a code on a street nearby, so they were out of ambulances. And Chuck, parnel with emergency services, directed that peak truck to come down and provide extra coverage, have them stage at exit 73. By the time they got to exit 73 to stage, there was an issue at one of the medical offices here in town with someone having a stroke. And so they were able to get there very quickly. Otherwise, there wouldn't have been coverage here in town. So it's helped not just on the eastern end of the county, but here in the Whiffle area as well. So I'm very happy with that result, and I think the staffing is working out pretty well.
Have we sent the Western Agreement to retreat?
I have finished it. I'm not sure that I've sent it. I'll make sure I do that. I think it would be appropriate for them to take that up in September. So I think we generally agreed to the language. We just need everybody to go ahead and vote on it and sign off on it. And I would suggest they need to vote on it first and then we'll bring it to you to finalize.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hankins?
I do not.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having at least one good news thing. All right. County Administrator, Mr. Baer.
First item, y'all may remember last year, we ran into some situations where we had some bond forfeitures that the individuals were located and came back and they appealed to the judges basically to get their bond reimbursed. You have a memo in there requesting you to amend and appropriate $5,000 for a bond forfeiture. Ms. Woods gave me another request today for another $4,000. Ms. Woods gave me another request today for another four thousand dollars that has met the requirement. I would request, if you all would, just up the amount as shown here to three thousand and twelve thousand. That'll give us enough to cover the nine thousand that's out there, and it'll give us six thousand in the budget to cover any of the other ones that happened to come forward. But these are the, the bond has been deposited with the county because they either didn't show to court or whatever, but they came back, showed up to court, and we have to reimburse them that amount. So I would request the budget amendment request be approved with the increase to three thousand and twelve thousand on those respective lines.
So for a total of?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And one question before we vote on the expense for the thirty-one, oh-two-one-four-nine-eight-one-oh-seven with the Sheriff's Department.
That's where, when the bond funds come in, like when the five thousand came in, four thousand goes to the PAF fund, one thousand goes to the County General Fund. So when we reimburse it, four thousand comes back out of the PAF fund, one thousand comes back out of the General Fund.
I wasn't sure what their role was in that, so.
And I do have staff confirm each time, and Ms. Gwynn, I think, has been confirming with Ms. Woods that that is the split, that the General District Court does give them the same eighty-twenty split as they do on fines and forfeitures.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment request as presented by Mr. Bear.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Excuse me, is there any questions or discussion on that request? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
So approved.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, we put out advertisement for Bond Counsel Services. Webster Day with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle has provided excellent service to us for many years. We conducted interviews, reviewed this, and staff recommendation is to enter into an agreement for Webster, for Spillman, Thomas, and Battle to serve as Bond Counsel. That does include Webster Day and other members of their staff, namely Mike Lockaby, Bryce Hunter, and Carter Brothers. We worked with Webster and Carter quite a bit over the years. I would recommend the board authorize the county administrator to sign this agreement.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the agreement for Spillman, Thomas, and Battle for Bond Counsel. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, on the south side of Progress Park, south of Lane Enterprises, where the pipe manufacturing plant is, there is a stormwater management facility that has been there, that's on county property, that serves the Lane Enterprises for years. It has been used as such, they had an expansion a couple of years ago, and y'all may remember they doubled the size of their building there. The stormwater management, I guess, group is requiring that we execute a new stormwater management maintenance facility agreement with DEQ. Mr. Kinsler has worked on this over the last year with them. My recommendation is authorizing staff to execute this stormwater maintenance agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement as presented. So have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion about that motion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item, we're trying to close out the rail project in Progress Park. This is a no-cost change order for seventy-four days, request board approval.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the change order for the Blue Star Rail Extension. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook, any questions or discussion about the change order? Mr. Hankins, I'd just like to point out, Mr. Bear's change order didn't cost anything. If you'd like to jot that down, take a note.
He'll claim this was his project anyway.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
And last, I've sent y'all email information, I would just request board's consensus or board's approval for, to authorize up to six thousand dollars for a solid light waste, long-range planning for a potential waste-to-energy facility.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize up to six thousand dollars.
So moved.
Right, have a motion by Mr. Horny, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, is there any questions or discussion on that?
Are we going to piggyback off of Smith County on that?
It'll be a joint with Smith, Washington, With, and Blaine County. And if Grayson or anybody else wants to come into it, they'll come into it as well, and we'll knock our cost share down in the process. Washington County is also talking to Bristol right now, just to see if they have any interest.
I wonder, after talking to Mr. Sturgill, I wonder if that won't come to fruition. All right, is there any other questions or discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, it's all I have.
All right, we'll move on to County Attorney, Mr. Forthing.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Move on to Board reports, we have Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
Yes, the Building and Grounds Committee met on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and recommends authorizing the county administrator to execute an agreement with the town of Ruoytreat to install a new cutoff valve and extend water to the web property off Lake Road at Ruoytreat.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Next, we have the Water Committee.
All right, the Water Committee met on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and recommends waiving the late fees and penalties for the Chenault property at one-oh-seven Fox Den Road. This will leave a balance of nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to pay prior to reconnecting.
Right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Yeah, can, Mr. Bear, can you explain that, or Mr. Hankins a little bit?
Yeah, basically, the, the, there was a home on the property, and the residents were connected to the water. In October of two thousand and seventeen, the home was removed. They had never connected to the water, so they had been paying the non-user fee, or they had been billed the non-user fee, they had not paid the non-user fee. When they removed the home from the property, we stopped billing for the non-user fee, and at that time, the balance was nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Since that time, they have never paid that, and with penalty and interest, it has now grown to two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-six cents. They are now wanting to place a home on that property and connect to the county water. That would require them fully paying the outstanding balance. They requested if they could just pay the amount that was due in December and waive penalty and interest. And so they would owe the nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents for the unpaid balance on that account.
Okay, so, but, but they both, so the owners both passed away, am I reading that right?
Right, yeah.
So.
And it was, they left the property in the account. The account was originally in the name of Andrea Chenault. And Andrea Chenault is still living and still one of the ones looking at putting water on that or connecting a trailer that they're trying to put there, or a double-wide that they're trying to put there to the water.
The way I understand it, the, they were, someone renting the property, and they actually were paying the water bill.
The water bill was in their name.
Then that person either moved out or quit paying the bill, whatever. But, I, I mean, me personally, I'd like to see us just erase the whole thing and start from scratch because at least if they connect, we've got a paying customer. And I'm pretty sure we've done similar to that in the past.
That's kind of what I was wondering, was if they actually connect, we're actually, you know.
Right, and, and this, and this is a, they've never connected.
They've never connected.
So this is no actual water that we've ever paid, this is all.
So it's not like we spent a dollar.
Right, pumping water too.
Pumping a gallon of water and never got paid back.
Right, this was the non-user fee that we're.
Is there a meter actually there?
There's not, I don't know if there's a setting there or not, but there's not an actual meter there because it's never been connected.
They've got to pay for the meter, which is, how much is that now, twelve hundred?
Fifteen hundred, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
And there, I.
Okay, didn't you say, when, in the meeting, wasn't it that they paid the hookup fee?
Yeah, I think Don said the hookup fee has already been paid on that. So the hookup fee was paid years ago, and in the process. So it's just a matter of setting the meter.
Which is going to be our cost, because it was paid back then when it was only three hundred dollars.
Yeah, like three fifty for the connection.
Yeah, three fifty, and now it's a whole lot more expense than hooking it up, and we're going to eat that.
But is it?
But if the meter base is all there, I mean, all we got to do is go out and put a meter in it. They've paid the fee, I do not know if the meter base is actually there.
Right, but I mean, if they paid the fee, we should have set the meter base. I mean, if we didn't, that's our fault.
I don't, I don't have objections to waiving the penalty and interest back for that point in time. I would request that you all still have them pay the amount that was owed because we're still charging people every month for the non-user fees, and everyone should be paying the non-user fees. But that's just coming from staff.
Right.
We can't recommend waiving non-user fees on anyone because everyone's still paying those every month. And we're taking people to court to collect those that have not been paid, even though they're not using the water now. We're taking them to court to, you know, to collect judgments on them for not paying non-user fees.
And I understand that, but the people that actually originally owned the property have both deceased. So I know we've, we've done stuff like this in the past, or I believe we have, so, and just wrote it all off, and that way we get a, we get somebody in there that's going to be paying water and using water because they're actually wanting to connect to it, they're not just wanting to pay the non-user fee.
I agree.
Do I need to make that as a motion?
Well, we actually have a recommendation from committee that doesn't require a second, so I would say that if that's the consensus of the majority, we probably need to kill this recommendation and then have somebody make a motion to waive it if that's, I mean.
Or amend the motion from committee, that's what I'm thinking.
Can we do that, can we?
I would think so.
Well, I thought I had it figured out, Scott, and you threw me a curve.
You follow your lead.
You're going to go over and sit next to Matt. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to amend the recommendation from the committee.
I will make that motion.
To waive all the fees.
To waive all the fees and just start from scratch.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Horny, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second from Ms. Lawson, is there any other questions or discussion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Water Committee?
I believe that is it.
All right, we'll move on to Board time, we'll start with Mr. Burnett.
I sent Mr. Bear an email about Forest Creek Drive road signs, did you ever get a chance to talk to Land on those?
They are, they've got a bunch of lot, signs that are on order to come in, and I'm trying to confirm if that's one of the ones that's on there to come in, so yes.
And I've got my answer on Grandview from the minutes earlier, so I have nothing, I just ask the chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Lawson?
I do have one item, I guess this is for Mr. Bear. It's in conjunction with the Blue Waste Project for Reed Creek. I need to make a recommendation to request the Commonwealth to recognize Reed Creek as a waterway that you can navigate. And that would be from, the section from the Trust Bridge, the Tonnee Whiffle's Trust Bridge Park, all the way to the New River. Is that, do you need that informed in the motion?
I would make it informed in the motion, yes.
Just the staff and the board, they got it, it's for.
Okay, I'll make that motion then.
All right.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Lawson, a second by Mr. Horny, is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thank you all, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you ma'am, Mr. Cook?
I have nothing this time, sir.
Mr. Smith, oh.
He emailed them all in.
I know. After I told him, you're not going to be here, this is going to be a short meeting, then he sends an email, Mr. Horny.
I've got to, I've got to enjoy this one because I actually had a person call me from your district, so I get to handle your problems instead of you handling my, handling my problems for a change.
Well, if it was dollar bills, I'd still be richer than you.
Well, you're probably right.
But, but enjoy the moment, go ahead.
Just let me, let me baste them out in my moment, you know. I had a person call me from Kinder Valley Road, and he was talking about the noise ordinance that we have and dogs barking. I don't know if Arlen and them have checked into it.
Well, Arlen's no longer there.
Oh, yeah.
He's retired.
How was that basket going for you, Mr. Horny?
See, it went to my head.
Which, which road?
Kinder Valley Road.
Kinder Valley, okay. We have been working on a noise ordinance complaint, but it's not Kinder Valley Road, I'm not familiar with that one.
I mean, I don't know if it's, he actually works for the Sheriff's Department, I don't know, I presume it must be for Smith County or another county.
Okay.
Because he, he talked about the ordinance kind of being vague and how do you enforce it and.
Is, is he complaining about somebody else, or is he, okay.
They have little bitty dogs and they yip, yip, yip all the time, he said.
Okay, so it's animals, okay. All right. I will find out if, if our officers have heard anything about it, we'll see.
And what we can do about it if we can.
Yep, if they have, thank you, sir.
I believe that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Terry.
Nothing this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and a few things I had, I followed up with Mr. Bear, so I don't have anything. The next item on our agenda is a closed session under two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven-eight-eight, consultation with legal counsel in reference to solar projects. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion? All right, here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're now in closed session. All right, have a motion to come out of closed session by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're now back in open session and on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification, please.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the Virginia, or with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of, if I can talk, Information Act, whereas Section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
All right. All right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry, and a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on the certification? All right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Mr. Bear, anything else to come before the board?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins? Mr. Forthing? Ms. Collins? All right. Here and now, we'll be adjourned.